Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Council of City Commission to order for Monday, November 21st, 2016. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Knott.
Here.
Commissioner Millsar. Commissioner Sykes.
Here.
Commissioner Urban.
Here.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Cooney.
Present.
Mayor Hopewell.
Present. May we have a motion to excuse Commissioners Urban and, or excuse me, Commissioners Millsar and Anderson?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Colleen.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Sykes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. For our opening ceremony this evening, we will have an invocation by Reverend Julie Klein of First United Methodist Church. I ask that you stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge release. Good evening Reverend.
Good evening. I invite you to a time of prayer, and I invite you to take a position of prayer that is comfortable for your tradition, or your lack thereof, a tradition. I realize that we come from a diverse background, and that is a gift, one that we must treasure. And, in the calling of you to prayer, I also invite you to, in general, be about a raising of our consciousness. So let's come together in that spirit. Let us pray. God of us all, in this time, in this season of Thanksgiving, we come to you with grateful hearts. We are grateful that we are given this day, to live, and breathe, and move with your spirit. We are grateful that we are given this community of Kalamazoo, that supports us, that helps us to learn, and to grow, and to become people, who are strong in will, and activism, and living full abundant lives. We thank you, God, for this gathering this evening, of people who desire to create this community, to work for this community, to make this community better, more diverse, and a shining light to all who would become a part of it and pass through. We ask God that your spirit would abide in this place. Take our minds, and think through them. Take our lips, and speak through them, and take our hearts, and set them afire, with passion, with love, and with hope. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Commissioners, you have the agenda before you. Are there any changes? Hearing none. Anyone in the audience wanting to comment on items under the consent agenda, that would be items under F? That item will need to be moved to the regular agenda. If you have such an item, please indicate at this time. Hearing none. Communications Manager Chamberlain?
Just one, just a reminder that the City Commission will have a work session a week from tonight, at 6:00 PM, and that will be at the Water Reclamation Plant, the main conference room on the first floor, and Harrison Street. So, that is all.
Thank you. The consent agenda, please.
Item number one is approval of a one-year contract extension in the amount of $500,000 with Constellation New Energy Gas Division LLC, for natural gas to be used to heat selected city facilities. Item two, approval of a one-year contract with Aetna Supply for the purchase of miscellaneous water inventory valves and brass supplies, in a total amount of $201,168.16. Number three is adoption of a resolution vacating a portion of Ampercy Avenue and an adjacent public alley. Item four is approval of the sale of 1115 Jefferson Avenue to Roderick G. O'Brien for $120. Item five is approval of the sale of the west half of 442 Drexel Place to Christopher and Maria Volk for $120, and the sale of the east half of 442 Drexel Place to Bashkar Tispati for $120. Item six is approval of the sale of 636 Ada Street to Charlotte J. Ogerian for $120. Item seven, acceptance of a grant from the Richard and Thelma Foundation, in the amount of $25,300 for Bronson Park Holiday Decorations. And finally, number eight, approval of the minutes of the City Commission meeting of November 7, 2016. That is all.
Thank you, Manager Chamberlain. Commissioners, the requested actions are motion to approve items one through eight, and authorize the City Manager to sign all documents on behalf of the City is their motion. Moved by Commissioner Urban, supported by Commissioner Sykes. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Knott.
Yes.
Commissioner Sykes.
Yes.
Commissioner Urban.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Hopewell.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner's motion carried. Manager Chamberlain, the regular agenda, please.
We have one item tonight, and that is a first reading of an ordinance to rezone the east 12.78 acres of 4501 Arboretum Parkway, from Zone CC to Zone RM-24, and schedule a public hearing for December 5th, 2016.
Thank you.
We do have staff available here tonight. Senior Development Planner Rob Baucham can give us an overview of this project.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. The parcel for this rezoning is part of the overall Arboretum Development Area, that's located between Drake Road and Solon, and it is owned by the WMU Foundation. In 2006, the west 30 acres of this property was rezoned to a commercial district, to encourage commercial development there. The rezoning included this subject property. Some of the permitted uses that would currently be allowed on this parcel in the commercial zone include a big-box store, auto repair and sales, a gas station, a bar restaurant with outdoor customer areas, or an outdoor sports stadium. Over the last 10 years, there have been two commercial develops, developments in this west 30 acres. This amounts to less than 10% of that 30 acres of commercial property. The foundation has been approached by a company who would like to build an apartment complex on the subject property. The concept plan for this complex indicates that it would include 241 units and 15 buildings, swimming pool, a playground, and a park area. An apartment complex of this type would be allowed in the current zone, but only as a mixed-use project, with offices or commercial uses on the first floor. The applicant does not wish to have this type of development on the site. The rezoning is needed to allow a standalone apartment complex there. The applicant has conducted a marketing study for the area, which has indicated that there is a demand for additional units in this area. Staff believes that an apartment complex would be in less intensive use than many of the commercial uses I mentioned previously. This request would keep two acres of the property right along Drake Road in the commercial zone, for commercial purposes. In recommending this rezoning, staff has taken the following items into consideration. There are no current vehicular access points between Arboretum Parkway and the Arcadia Neighborhood, and there will be no cut-through traffic from this apartment complex into the neighborhood. The traffic that would be generated by the complex would utilize Drake Road and Arboretum Parkway, and both of these streets have adequate capacity to accommodate the traffic for this complex. If the rezoning is approved, a site plan would need to be submitted to our office for review and approval, and this would include the need for a traffic study for the complex, to review its impact on the area. The Arboretum Development Area was intended and was designed for development of this type. The West Side Area Plan, it was adopted in 2003, identifies this parcel to be in both the general commercial and the high-density residential land use categories, so the proposed apartment complex would comply with this plan. The high-density residential category allows more than 12 units per acre, so the proposed RM-24 zone would be appropriate for this complex. An apartment complex would also be required to have at least 50% of its land area in open space, whereas commercial development would only be required to have 20%. Forty acres of continuous, of open space are required in the overall development area. With the development of this complex, there would still remain over 40 acres of open space in the area. The West Side Plan does call for 856 residential units to be built in this area. If this complex is built, this, along with the Walden Woods project, would still be less than half of this amount. This complex would be over a quarter of a mile from the closest residential property in the Arcadia Neighborhood. The complex would be buffered from the Arcadia Neighborhood by the Calvary Bible Church, the Kalamazoo County, Kalamazoo Community Soccer Complex, and other existing apartment complexes. We are recommending approval. Thank you.
Questions, Commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wanting to speak on this item, please step to the podium. You'll have four minutes. Give us your name and whether you live within the city. Good evening, sir.
Evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Mike Speedy. Though I grew up in Kalamazoo, attended Kalamazoo Public Schools, I do now reside primarily in Indianapolis, though my family still is here today. What I wanted to do is just hit the high points of this development. It's not any ordinary apartment. It's a very high-end, high-quality development, including attached garages, some with direct entry, and half of it will have, there'll be, half of the development will have attached garages with remote controls. The changes in the market, we're going to have, we are able to afford granite countertops, nine and 10-foot ceilings, in addition to vaulted ceilings, and then all the higher amenities, from washer and dryer connections to walk-in closets, two-tone paint and such. More of that is, can be delayed in going through at the public hearing. I have sent you an email a week ago with attachments that you can refer to. I've also left at your places even more information. That's the same information that I shared with Arcadia Neighborhood when I met with the officers. At that meeting, I also offered to meet to the full membership of the HOA. They declined, and I respect that, and I left without the, with the impression there weren't concerns, at least from the officer, and still stand ready to address them as I hear them, much of which have been addressed by the Plan Commission. I guess I'll just close in saying that I understand how important the West Side Area Substudy is, Area Plan. I've served on a commission myself for two terms, and I have participated in these extensively, and I understand how many hours go into them, and I understand that from my perspective, it is, we study them to make a decision whether to invest money. So there's, it's something, there's a lot invested on both sides. And, lastly, I want you to take note of the quality of the development after this meeting, and you'll hear more at the public hearing. It's not, again, it's not ordinary. It's got lots of brick. Mentioned attached garages, but it's very walkable. You'll see sidewalks going everywhere. And not just the Arcadia residents like to live in close proximity to the university, but a lot of other professionals, people who are coming back, who enjoy the cultural amenities, the sporting events, and like to bike down to those. So with that, thank you for your service and your time this evening, and I look forward to going into more detail at the public hearing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, please. Good evening, sir.
My name is, excuse me, Rex Brugman. I reside at 806 Ellendale in the city of Kalamazoo. My home is located in the Arcadia Neighborhood. My coming down to speak tonight is prompted by the proposed amendment of the Zone District map, as to 12.78 acres of property located on Arboretum Parkway. Let me start at the conclusion. I expect the City Commission to ultimately approve this change to the zoning map. The city is a municipal entity, is starved for tax revenue. Putting this property on the tax rolls is a work item on a punch list shared by the City and the WMU Foundation. City staff, in my view, has been overselling this change to the zoning map and the project itself. I would probably come down here and use my four minutes on December 5th to talk more about the proposed amendment to the zoning map. Right now, I want to focus on the Arcadia Neighborhood. The Arcadia Neighborhood is a neighborhood of roughly 420 single-family residential, mainly owner-occupied homes located on the west side of Kalamazoo. Through a combination of ordinance enforcement and the effects of the Kalamazoo Promise, the Arcadia Neighborhood is maintaining its primarily owner-occupied character. Beyond that, I would say that the residents of Arcadia are living a certain kind of Kalamazoo dream. Arcadia is a diverse neighborhood, I will say, if I can appropriate the use of that word here. In 2016, Arcadia is racially, ethnically, and culturally diverse. It is beyond tolerant, it is neighborly. It's a beautiful thing. Arcadia is a dream of living into a rippled age in your longtime home. Many residents are living that dream. Arcadia is a dream of being 30 years old and living in your cute, neat, family home with your spouse and your young children. One can see the young parents in the neighborhood, walking to the Arcadia Elementary School Playground in good weather, walking their children in strollers on the neighborhood streets. Young and old, people are investing in their homes in Arcadia. New siding, new roofs, new driveways. Arcadia residents are investing in their homes in a way that reflects and expresses their feelings about the life going on inside and outside of their homes. Some of us may remember Paul Todd coming down to address the City Commission and talking about some of these ideas and feelings, about homeownership and character, and how these ways of being can in turn relate to being a citizen and a democracy. Arcadia is a dream of a walkable and bikeable community. Arcadia is riding your bike downtown on a summer evening to one of several local breweries, and then the dream of a friend putting your bike in the back of their car and giving you a lift, so you don't have to ride your bike back up the hill through campus if you don't want to. It's getting your exercise by walking the loop around the west side of Arcadia, and exchanging greetings with five different neighbors you know by first name as you do so. It's slow and calm streets, free of cut-through traffic, so you can use your car, of course. You just don't have to have the feeling that every aspect of life and movement has been organized around the car. You can kick around the idea of buying a scooter and leaving your car in the driveway for a few days. These dreams and others are currently being lived in the Arcadia Neighborhood. The City Commission should first set itself a standard of doing no harm to these dreams. Thank you for your attention.
One of you can go, sir, one of, either one of you can go, we can have you sign in after. Good evening, sir.
How you doing? My name is James Robinson. I also live in the Arcadia Neighborhood. The concerns that I have pretty much dovetail with what Rex just got done saying. Most of the concerns that we have in the neighborhood center around the traffic that we already have in the area. When I heard the gentleman speak earlier about the roads being able to accommodate additional traffic from a new apartment, a complex going in, I have a problem with that only because I live there, and I drive those roads every single day. If you are in the area, when the middle school gets out, or even when the kids are going in there, same for the elementary school that's in the neighborhood, the roads are already pretty congested as it is. The concern that I have is primarily based around that because I understand that there's a really good chance that you guys are probably going to go ahead and approve this anyways. And, the problem that I have is that the traffic that we already have in that area is already ridiculous. If you are traveling on South Drake, on West KL, or on West Michigan Avenue, in that area, at this time of night, you are going to be probably waiting for at least two signals if you're planning on making a left-hand turn from one road to the other. That's my biggest concern. As I walk my daughter to school in the morning, and if I'm lucky enough in the evening to be able to pick her up, that's probably the best thing for me to do, even though I live only a couple blocks away, because the car traffic is already so heavy that you can't get but one car up and down the road as it is. There are already people who are cutting through the neighborhood to drop their kids off, and there are already people who are exceeding the speed limit, nobody's doing anything about that. What's going to happen when we have more traffic from more people with more families bringing more kids into that neighborhood, in the morning and in the afternoon? Also, in the afternoon with the kids getting out in the junior high school, same thing. I don't know if any of you guys have had the pleasure of traveling down Arboretum Parkway in the afternoon, but it's already a zoo. So what's going to happen when you have an apartment complex that has an additional 200 to 400 people living there? Whether or not they have kids, it's going to be open 24/7, unlike a big-box store would be, or a commercial bank or something like that. So, my concern, again, centers around what are we going to do with the traffic situation that we're already living in? We already have the roads that are around there that, they're in decent condition, but they could stand some upkeep, and they're not being kept up that well as it is. So, with the additional traffic, again, my concern is the volume that we already have that we're already dealing with. And if we're going to throw more cars, more people into that, what's that going to do for the situation that we already find ourselves living in? I also find it hard to believe that if this plan ends up going through, which I'm pretty sure it will, that there's not going to be any interest in cutting through into the neighborhood that we already live in. There's four roads that are pretty close to the backside of Arboretum Parkway. Hillsborough Court, Ducksbury Street, Edenburg, and Dobbin. Dobbin already had a cut-through at one point off of Arcadia that was, that was since blocked off, or, excuse me, off Arboretum, that was already blocked off a few years back. So, who's to say that in a year's time, or two years' time, when you guys realize all the traffic, that's even higher than it is right now, that we're not going to have another meeting that's going to say, hey guys, guess what? We made a mistake. We need to cut through your neighborhood, and we need to alleviate the traffic that we helped create in your neighborhood that we said wasn't there in the first place. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commission. My name is Brian Grant. I'm a resident of Arcadia. I live on Edinburgh Drive. My children walk to Arcadia School. And, I feel like this proposal sells short the city, and it does not best utilize the space that we have in the city. If you visit a lot of other great communities, there are parks, there are public open spaces that this city lacks. I feel that once these spaces are developed, these are gone. This area around here, known as the Basswood Preserve, was one of three great open spaces, natural spaces, in our city. Kleinstuck, Asylum, and Basswood Preserve. Half of that was cut through and frankly disrupted by Arboretum Parkway about 15, 10, 15 years ago. This would be a continuation of the densifying of this area. I could use my time by listing the 22 apartment buildings that are present right around this area. I really struggle to see that we have a lack of housing options around here. We have immediate school nearby, and then we have soccer fields. Why can't this be a more useful space, such as a park, such as a dog park? There are so many different things that we could have, other than another apartment place right here. My house is three, three houses down from where that future and likely cut-through that someone is going to want to propose, that the houses are deeded against any possible cut-through. But when someone does want to come through and, and direct traffic through my neighborhood, that's where my kids ride their bike, is right in this area. And, people may talk about the, the street being able to handle the traffic. There's a difference in being able to handle the traffic and how the street is actually used. Arboretum Parkway is a raceway. People drive their Crotch Rockets 70 miles an hour up and down that street every night. On October 31st, on Halloween, I was the one that called 911 because of the car I saw that went 80 miles an hour, and went through the woods, and totaled itself going through the woods. So just because there's a street, and there's some, some natural space separating the neighborhood from the street, that doesn't change the use of the area. I don't feel like how nice, depending on the apartment complex, it has granite, it's nice, it's got, you know, it's got garage space, I don't think that is the best that this city can do with that type of space. Once this is developed, there, there's so little opportunity to gain back that green space that adds to the character of the city. Is this supposed to be a tree-city USA? And all, if you drive through that area, what do you see? You just see apartment after apartment, and is that the best that our city can do? I really hope that we can find a better use for this type of space, and I think that would be to the benefit of all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wanting to address this item? Seeing no one, Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to offer the ordinance for first reading, and schedule a public hearing for December 5th, 2016, is their motion. Moved by Commissioner Urban. Supported by Commissioner Anderson. We are in discussion. Hearing none. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sykes.
Yes.
Commissioner Urban.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Hopewell.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Knott.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner's motion carried. This will be offered for first reading on December 5th. Mr. Manager, you have a report this evening?
Nothing else tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, you have a report?
No.
Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
We are now at Citizens Comments. Anyone wanting to comment to the Commission on any item this evening, please step to the podium. You have four minutes. Give us your name and whether you live within the city. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm, well, I like to be called Nehemiah Scooter, but that's not yet the name, my legal name. And my legal name is Asia Kazad, as many of you know. I'd like to speak on two issues tonight. First, I'm very glad to see Reverend Julie Klein here, after she gave her prayer. Ordinarily, the ministers give the prayer and immediately leave, as if they had no real interest in city affairs. This goes along with my general feeling that our time-honored tradition of separation of church and state has proven to be a flop. Our streets are not safe, our families are falling apart. I believe that it's time for the ministers and the politicians to get together and work out some compromises that will allow them to work together. One example of vicious loathes and fishes, which was expedited by many local churches, it has been a success, in my opinion. But there are many other areas in which we could need a cooperation between church and state. And the policy of separation that has been practiced so long is a flop, in my opinion. We need to ditch it and get some combinations of church and state. That's my first thing. Secondly, a very different topic perhaps, but you may say there's a much higher proportion... Secondly, a very different topic perhaps, but you may say, there's a much higher proportion of its population in lockup than any other civilized country or uncivilized country. That's, when I say lockup, I'm using a general term to refer to prisons, jails, mental hospitals, and the criminally insane lockups. There may be others I'm just not aware of, but many of our citizens get locked up for great lengths of time for relatively small things, and the result is that the USC has a high proportion of its population in lockup. To do something about that at a local but scale, I'm organizing a group I call Prisoners Anonymous for people that seem to go in and out of lockup frequently. Many of these people have troubles with mental illness, such as I had in the past. Maybe they don't take their medicines faithfully, which is usually necessary. There may be other problems. I live at 1215 Oakland Drive, and I invite people who want to do something about lockup in their lives to come to meetings on Friday night at 7:00 PM at this 1215 Oakland Drive. And we call it Prisoners Anonymous analogous to Alcoholics Anonymous and Alcoholics Anonymous. And people that come don't need to give their full names. They will give their first name and their last initial. We'll sit down and talk with them and try to work out some changes in lifestyle and policy so that they don't go from one lockup to another to another. This particular issue is one that General Booth, who founded the Salvation Army, was very concerned with. The Salvation Army has worked in some other areas, but not in this one very much, in my opinion. So we're organizing this Prisoners Anonymous group to do what the Salvation Army has flopped at, and like A.A., and hopefully it will prove to be a great success. Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to address the Commission this evening? Seeing no one at Commissioners' Comments, Commissioner Urban?
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Knott.
Sure. Just quickly, I think most of us attended the Station 5 celebration on Friday evening. It was a great example of public, public-private partnerships. And our Director of Parks and Rec gave us a preview of the youth that were going to be targeted to benefit from that. During that time, I had a conversation with one of the foundation directors that was part of this project being a success. And we talked about, everybody probably is aware that I live around the corner from the Friends Meeting House, where the Friends, the Quakers, have a rather large park in the West Douglas neighborhood. And that park has been struggling for the last couple of years. And as I was talking to this foundation rep, she said that she believes she made a grant to the Quakers to hire a security guard for that park. Now, it's no secret that the park is, is having challenges. But I was taken aback that that's not a solution, hiring a private security guard for a park in one of our core urban neighborhoods. So I don't know what the strategy is for Parks and Rec, if there's already a waiting list of kids. I know that it's going to be aimed at youth in the north side and the Douglas neighborhood, but I'm inviting Parks and Rec staff to step out and take a look at what's going on in the Denner Street Park, because there are 20, 30 kids there a day. We've really been struggling, and I just don't believe that a private security guard is the answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sykes?
Yeah, I'm going to step into a conversation that it sounds like started earlier in our neighborhood meeting, and I apologize for not being able to make it to that. But I just wanted to ask, maybe, this is for City Attorney Robinson, whether or not there's some research that can be done into making ourselves a sanctuary city, and what that looks like for especially some of our undocumented residents. I, I think that's a conversation that I know I would like to have. I think I've got some colleagues up here who would like to have that conversation as well. So if we can sort of get the ball rolling on that. And then I, I just want to make a statement, I guess, to, to the city, to our community I know myself, I know many people are still sort of reeling from the outcome of the election that just passed. And I just, you know, without getting into partisan politics, because that's not what we do up here, I do, I just want to say out loud for any members of our community who are Muslim, for any members of our community who are immigrants, documented or otherwise, for any members of our community that are LGBTQ, for people of color, for, for anybody in our community that identifies with a group of people that has been attacked or threatened by our upcoming administration, I want to say, you have a fighter in me. I, I know and believe you have fighters in all of us up here. And I want to say that you have a place in our community, no matter who you are. We, we have always been better than that as a city, and we always will be. And so, you know, I have talked to so many people with children struggling with whether or not they get to stay, and parents who are terrified about whether or not they're safe or their children are safe. You know, members of our community who are just right now terrified. And, and I just, I, I would be remiss if, if, if I didn't just say, you know, we're all in this boat together, and, and we will all support one another.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to recognize that this is an auspicious week always for all of us, being Thanksgiving week. And, and recognize actually when Thanksgiving was declared to be a national holiday officially. And that was by one of our greatest presidents, Abraham Lincoln. And that proclamation was made in 1863. And for even those of us with the thinnest sense of history in this country, anyone can imagine that 1863 was most certainly a time when this country was very substantially divided. And I think that there are certainly some parallels for this year. And recognizing all that, and I guess also wanting to just follow up with further thoughts that President Abraham Lincoln had in a later address about recognizing our, our better angels, I, I would like for us to remember that this country has great values and has survived through challenging times before, and that it was, it's, it's almost ironic in some way that in that year, I suppose, a lot of people could have said, why are you even making this statement about Thanksgiving at all in 1863? So that said, I think it's, it's worth recognizing, and I think we should be thankful for all the good that there is around us, and recognize that we all have the great, great opportunity to take responsibility, to make sure that that continues, and that we follow our better angels and continue to help build, you know, what we aspire to in this country.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to echo some of the things my colleagues have said. It was a tough election, and there have been reports afterwards of people being attacked for who they are. And, and our mayor issued a very, very fine proclamation after the election, reminding us of our common humanity, and that we share a common community, and we must live together in respect and care and work together to build our community. We have people in this community who are undocumented, and they have great reason to be afraid right now. It's important to realize that something can be legal and not moral and not right. Slavery was legal. It wasn't moral. It wasn't right. It was important to take a stand against slavery. How can it be right to tear apart a family, of people that have done nothing wrong but have been respected, loved members of our community? So I'm sure that I echo my other colleagues to say that we stand with you, our brothers and sisters who are undocumented, and we will do whatever we can to help you in this time of trial. And I think it, I really hope that we can explore the possibility of, of joining other cities around the country and being a sanctuary city.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Happy Thanksgiving. Your adjourn.[1761.40]